Would members please take their seats. Thank you. The meeting will now come to water. As most of you know, I'm your town moderator, Brian Walsh, and welcome to our Fall Town Meeting. Having been advised by the town clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that the quorum is present for the transaction of business and this meeting is now open. In keeping with tradition, we will start our meeting with the Pledge Allegiance to the Flag, so will the membership please stand and join in with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Actually, if you'd remain standing, my apologies. This is going to be a little easier. Since our last meeting, we have lost a longstanding town meeting member and others, and when I say longstanding, I'm talking about 62 years of service to this body. Robert Foster, who's one of the longest-serving town meeting members in the history of Milton's Town Meeting. Robert also served as a wire inspector. We've also lost Christopher Lynch, who served as a videographer for Milton Access TV for several meetings in town, who tragically lost his life at the young age of 25 just last week. Thank you. You may be seated. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been requested for certain members of the personnel of the School Committee Planning Board, Board of Health, and other boards, committees, and departments, who are not town meeting members, to sit on the floor with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body? Such permission will be and is hereby accorded. Second, permission is granted to Milton Access TV to televise these proceedings. Also, please note that there is two side aisle microphones, each with three seats at the front reserved for those waiting to be recognized to speak. Third, I will now entertain a motion to continue to use the rules for conduct of our annual town meeting from in May of this year as the rules for this meeting. Moved and seconded? All those in favor? Close? Yeah, because those will be the rules. Quick reminder that we did add a new rule last May, and that rule, I'll read it since it is new to remind you. Each person speaking to an article, our amendment is limited to 10 minutes, and no person may speak on a question more than once when any other person desires to be heard or more than twice on the same question without permission of the town moderator. Pre-approved presentations will not necessarily be limited to 10 minutes at the discretion of the moderator. Now, let me explain a few things about this meeting. I'd like to thank the town clerk for developing a form for those who plan to make a motion to amend that is substantive or complex. This is a copy of the form. It's quite simple, and we have copies down at the warrant table committee, you can see being held up in the air. I do not require one or two word changings on, you know, making a motion to amend a particular motion with one or two word changes to reduce that to writing, but for all others we must. It's, our rules have stated that, and frankly, we've been drifting away from that, and it's causing a problem. We have had too much confusion and time wasted on this recently in the past. The clerk also needs exact verbiage of any motion voted on for official records of this meeting, and this will aid in that important effort. So these forms should be available, and they're down at the warrant committee table if you should need them. Appreciate your cooperation on that. As for this 15-articled warrant, much, after much review and consideration, I do not believe we'll finish it in one night. You may recall, one of the reasons for establishing this Fall Town Meeting yearly was the hope that we could consider bylaw changes at this Fall Meeting. We have several, and it just does not look feasible to finish all 15 articles in one night. Given the scheduling challenges, I plan to consider Article 13 after the completion of Articles 1 through 4. I will entertain a motion at that time. It's important, given the scheduling of people, are critical to that presentation. Okay, so with that, let's move to Article 1, which you will find on page 10 of your warrant. Article 1 is the authorization for acquisition of Central Avenue-Elliott Street parcel by eminent domain. It's to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift, taking by eminent domain, or otherwise, a certain parcel of land containing approximately 1,220 square feet, together with any structures and improvements thereon, which parcel is located at Central Avenue and Elliott Streets, Milton, Massachusetts, between property owned by the town of Milton and property owned by Carrick Realty Trust, and which parcel is also identified in Section 1 of Chapter 215 of the Acts of 2014, and to see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for the purpose of this article and to act on anything related there too. This was submitted by the board of selectmen, and it is recommended that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift, taking by eminent domain, or otherwise, a certain parcel of land containing approximately 1,220 square feet, together with any structures and improvements thereon, which parcel is located at Central Avenue and Elliott Street, Milton, Massachusetts, between property owned by the town of Milton and property owned by Carrick Realty Trust, and which parcel is also identified in Section 1 of the Chapter 215 of the Acts of 2014, and further, the town make no appropriation under this article. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? I recognize our chair of our board of selectmen, Katie Carlin.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town planner is going to put up a map of the property that's, we're talking about in question. We know that many of you are familiar with this property, but not everyone is, so we do want to give a little bit of background, and we've had a couple of questions from town meeting members about this article. So, the property that we're talking about is a narrow strip of land. It's about 1,220 square feet, and it's located between a parcel that's owned by the town, which is that larger square on the upper right-hand corner, and a larger parcel that's owned by Carrick Realty Trust. And I think many people know that Carrick Realty is owned by Milton residents, Jerry and Steve Connolly, are the principals of Carrick. There's been a lot of history to this, the overall property. This is the Henry site at Central Ave. and Elliott Street. And going back over many years, the town bought the smaller parcel about a dozen years ago. It's comprised of about 7,000 square feet, and it was bought for the purpose of influencing what the ultimate redevelopment of the Henry's building would be. The town engaged the Urban Land Institute to assist with the planning effort, and what grew out of that effort and a series of public meetings was a planned unit development zoning bylaw, which was for the Central Avenue Business District, and it would have, under the zoning bylaw, residential and commercial use could be built at not only the Henry site, but also at 36 Central, which has indeed happened, and also at the Fallon Building, which we all know is now used not under the zoning bylaw, but for commercial purposes, for Steel and Rye Restaurants, and also for the Ravens Real Estate Office. Carrick Realty, again, which owns the large portion on the left, the rest of the parcel, the majority of this property, applied for a special permit from the planning board a few years ago, but the application was denied. Carrick went ahead and filed a proposal to develop an apartment complex under Chapter 40B. There were some efforts two summers ago to get a group of elected officials and residents of the area together to see if the mixed-use development could be resurrected and brought back. And despite the efforts that were made at that time, the board of selectmen and Carrick were not able to agree, or to reach an agreement for the sale of the town-owned property, the 7,000-square-foot parcel, to Carrick. And this place that we're at right now is that Carrick has modified the 40B plan. They submitted it in the spring, and the 40B proposal is currently pending before the Board of Appeals. Now, the 1,200-square-foot parcel is a parcel, again, it's landlocked. It butts the trolley tracks, the town-owned parcel, and Carrick parcel, and its ownership is unclear. Town council is available to address questions that anyone might have, but a title search has been done. A lot of research and work has gone into trying to locate the owner of the parcel. At one point, we believed that CSX, the railroad company, may have been the owner. It was never definite that they were the owner, but there were communications with CSX, and ultimately, we've concluded that they are not the owner of the property. There is a collapse in this part of the building, and the, we've had some discussions, the chair of the planning board, the town administrator, Senator Brian Joyce, and I had some discussions with the owner of Carrick Realty to look at the option of returning to the mixed-use development. And that's because we really believe that that's a far superior project than an apartment building minus the town land. We think that the best use of this property is to combine the parcels and see if we can get a mixed-use development in the commercial district. This past summer, at the suggestion of Senator Joyce and at the board of selectmen's request, Governor Deval Patrick filed for us, and the state legislature passed, special legislation that authorizes the board to acquire this 1,200-square-foot parcel. Now, the legislation referenced CSX Transportation or its successors and assigns, and the legislation authorizes us to not only acquire the parcel, but then to transfer that parcel plus the town's 7,000-square-foot parcel to Carrick. So we have legislation to authorize the acquisition from CSX and the sale, but CSX is not the owner of the property. So, we are now looking to take this property by eminent domain because the owner is not known. We have issued, it's called a Chapter 139 order on this property, finding essentially that the property is a danger or is a nuisance because of the collapse and because of the condition of the overall, of the building on that structure, which is part of the overall larger property, and the larger building. We put out a request for bids to demolish the property, the town-owned property, again, the 7,000-square-foot property, and we included in that request for proposals, the 1,200-square-foot property, on the theory that we would be taking it by eminent domain. We have received one bid. We have not yet acted on it, but that bid does include the cost of demolishing the town-owned property and the, we're calling it no man's land, the owner-unknown property. If we do pass Article 1 tonight, and we really strongly urge the town meeting to give us this authorization, then our plan is to meet later on this evening and sign an order of taking and to move forward with the eminent domain process. In closing, I would just like to say that we are working very closely with the planning board and with others to try to get the best use for this property, which we believe is a mixed-use development. And taking this property will turn the town's property from a 7,000-square-foot parcel to an 8,300-square-foot parcel. So it's going to give us a more valuable piece of land, whether we ultimately have a mixed-use development or not. And if we don't, then the town will have other options for dealing with its land, and this makes our property more valuable. The demolition costs, if an owner should come forward claiming that it's, that it or they or he are the purported owner of the building, then the demolition costs that we've paid would be an offset against the value of the property. So, we think we've addressed all of the issues here. We're happy to take questions. Town council is available to answer any questions regarding the process and the ownership, if there's, if there are specific questions that people have. But we do really urge the town meeting to approve the recommendation of the warrant committee under Article 1. It will give the town a greater piece of land and hopefully help us to achieve the goal that I think is shared pretty broadly, which is to see a mixed-use development, less density, and preserving some commercial space in this business district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carlin. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing that, I would remind you that it will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee say aye? Close, no? It's unanimous. Now, we're going to move to Article 2, but I forgot to. Just remind you all to turn your cell phones to silent mode, please. Article 2, to recommend that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by gift, taking by eminent domain, or otherwise, a certain parcel of land. Excuse me, I'm reading you Article 1's recommendation. I apologize. We're at the, at the top of page 11. Article 2. Capital items, water storage tanks. To see what sum of money the town will vote to appropriate for capital items, to determine how said appropriation shall be raised, whether by borrowing or otherwise, and to act on anything related there too. This is submitted by the board of selectmen and the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and it is recommended a sum of $5,400,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the rehabilitation, replacement, or enhancement of the town's water system, including costs incidental and related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, is authorized to borrow $5,400,000 under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 8, Subsection 4 and 5 of the general laws, as amended, or any other enabling authority, to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, and that the board of selectmen be and hereby is authorized to accept and expend, in addition to the foregoing appropriation, one or more grants or gifts from the public or private funding source. This will require a majority vote, and I would raw recognize the director of IDPW, Joe Lynch. Mr. Lynch, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Joe Lynch of the Director of Public Works. I'm not usually one for PowerPoint presentations, but I think that this night, this issue and article that's before you tonight is certainly worthy of some explanation, and most of that is based on the history of how we've gotten to the point where we are this evening, which is to ask you to borrow $5.4 million to correct some issues with our water system as it relates to the influence of what another community has over us. So part of that history is understanding that there have been several agreements, three in fact, between the towns of Milton and Canton, and because of those agreements that recently, in the past couple of years, it required us to understand better impacts that would result if Canton were to make some changes that were anticipated on their own behalf to our system, and those required us to then endeavor to produce a hydraulic model, to conduct inspection, detailed inspections of our water tanks and report on them, and to conduct assessments of the, these Canton impacts as it relates to both our model and our tanks, and then overall, look at our general capital improvement plan for the rest of the water system and not just the high-service area. When I refer to high-service area, Milton is served from the MWR completely, and there are two, there are three meters, two of which are on the low-pressure side, lower pressure, and then one that comes on the higher-pressure side. The higher-pressure side is fed to Milton up on Metropolitan Avenue, and ostensibly, they in turn distribute through the higher elevations of time, town, and distribute and feed three of our water tanks, one of which is on Big Blue Hill, on the side of Big Blue, and two of which are on the side of Chickatobbit Hill. Since 1953... It actually, part of this, part of this history is going to look at then, I'm sorry, is going to look at the water service system improvements that we might be needing to make as a result of the Canton changes, and specific to those tanks, dealing with our pressure within that system, specifically whether to reduce it or modulate it, and then last, we pipeline improvements in order to allow our tanks in high-service area to function properly. In 1953, the town of Milton and Canton first enter into its intermunicipal agreement. What that did back at that time was understand that Canton was looking to have that portion north of what is now 128 to be their industrial and commercial basis of growth, yet they were unable to feed that area with water supply. At the same time, Milton was needing to better balance the feeds to our three water tanks, and given the fact that we were growing in an area, in a way that we were, it made sense for the town of Milton and Canton to agree to do so. And what that resulted in was that Milton, we would provide water to Canton. We were billing them at a rate equal to, what was the MDC wholesale rate at the time, which is now the MWR, plus a 10% markup on that, on that water charge. The other part of that was then for, to, that Canton would allow us to use their pipelines to convey our water through those pipelines, so it would balance our one tank on Chickat, on Big Blue and the two tanks in Chickatobbit. And that pipeline runs down 138. In Canton, it's known as Washington Street. We call it Blue Hill Avenue. It then turns easterly along Blue Hill River Road and continues to the town border at Milton, where it then turns to Hillside, and then our feed continues up to Chickatobbit Hill in our two tanks there. I told you I've never done this before. So back in 2007, that was prior to my arrival here in town in 2009, there was a thought that Milton would grow concerned with its unaccounted-for water, and what that means is, is a statistical measurement of how much water moves through our system as compared to the amount of water that we in turn bill out to our retail customers, accounting for things like street sweeping, hydrant flushing, fires, brush fires and whatnot, statistically comes out with, you know, amount of water. In a perfect world, that a system that doesn't leak at all, your water is fully accounted for, and it's 0% lost. No world is perfect. Something on the order of, you know, 10, 12, as much as 15% is not out of the norm on an older system such as Milton's in the New England area. But back in that day, the number was much higher, and the thought was, was founded that perhaps the issue with Canton may be the source for, at least a considerable source of unaccounted-for water. That resulted in, you know, some heated discussions between the town of Milton and Canton, both at the administrative level, staff levels, all the way up to the, their board of selectmen and our board of selectmen. And the result of that was entering to a new agreement with Canton, which was done in 2008. Prior to that agreement being in place in 2008, there was a study that was commissioned by the town of Milton, and in that study, they determined that, yeah, there was perhaps some logic and some truth to the allegation that Canton may be responsible for Milton's lost water. That study concluded that the physical connections of everything on Canton south of 128 be defeated, meaning physically disconnected. To that end, the 2008 agreement was hammered out. What it did is completely negate the 1953 agreement, an agreement that had been in place for 55 years and worked perfectly well, by the way. It required Canton to physically disconnect those areas on their system, which was three critical areas, one on Green Street, one on Royal at Washington Street, and lastly, it's escaping me right now, the last one was right at the Milton Town Line, where there was a crossfeed heading over towards Green Street. By doing that, Milton could still feed much less of their community. There was no possible way for water to get south of 128. Therefore, the accountability question could be focused and narrowed down to a much more finite area. What that also did back in 2008, though, was adjust our billing rate to Canton as a motivating factor to them going from a wholesale plus 10% rate to us charging Canton the full retail rate, meaning the same rate that you folks paid at home, we in turn were charging the town of Canton, and obviously, on the volumes they were using, they were all, every bill was a tier-four customer. The agreement also went further, and it requires, required Canton to perform some capital improvements on their own. That was so that they could make their system fully self-sufficient, and they could take command of their own customers and turn it back. It also would require them to make those requirements by May of 2010. Canton missed that deadline by a long shot. They worked through their town meeting, through their planning process, their construction process, and those improvements were completed in the summer of 2013, where I was notified by a telephone call, with that every Public Works Director cringes whatever happened, that, "Oh yeah, we're ready to turn the valves and turn your water off." We emphatically said no over the telephone. We backed it up in writing, and were prepared to get an injunction if Canton were to continue to flex their muscles and do so. So, in 2008, that agreement was in place. 2013, we told them that they can't do it. We had some very serious concerns. It wasn't that we just didn't want them to turn us off. We had some very concerns of our own, serious concerns of our own. That critical loop, the reason it was put in place in 1955 to begin with, was so we could, I talked about balancing those tanks, and by balancing those tanks, we could then take, take advantage of flow rates that would allow those waters to dissipate down into the neighborhoods on a regular basis, and by the fluctuation in those tanks, maintain water quality, which is ostensibly taste and odor and freshness of the water. But under severe circumstances, older water, particularly in higher temperature months, could actually turn into a bacterial concern and public health concern. We test our water weekly, so any concern for bacteria is something we monitor closely, and I'm happy to say we do not have such an issue. We still also have not allowed Canton to defeat that connection. More important is the firefighting capabilities. By losing that loop, the ability to balance the system, particularly in the high-pressure area, when there's a fire anywhere in the high-pressure area, would result in some serious concerns for what it might do to our folks who live in those higher elevations. It also allowed us to look at the low-service area, those areas on the, served by the other two MWR meters, and if there was a conflagration that required a movement of a lot of water, would open a pressure-reducing valve, which is located in front of the police station, which would also draw off of those three tanks, and in doing that, would also have similar but less dramatic impacts, and we were concerned for that. And then lastly, is maintaining minimum pressures, which is 20 PSI. Anything below 20 PSI, you know, fails to meet federal regulations for clean water, safe drinking water. So we made all of those, we made all of those points to them verbally and in debate, and what that resulted in is Mr. Flynn and myself, the board of selectmen, and their board of selectmen, and their council, and their town administrator, Ms. Fagan, all working in concert for the better part of nine months, nine months of my life I'll never get back. But, but the result, we hammered out what we thought to be the best deal that would mean to Milton, and what it did is it bought us time to complete a study, and that, that new agreement was very, very specific to maintaining a timetable, with defined milestones, and if any of those milestones were failed to be met, would result in Canton saying, "You're in violation of the agreement. We're shutting you off." So it was very, very methodical, and that's what took all the time was working out those details. But what it did is required, allowed us time for us to complete a system study, understand what our needs were and what our impacts would be by this change, and to do that by June 30th, 2014. It allowed us time to bring an appropriation and borrowing article to town meeting, which is what we're doing now. We have until December 31st because Mr. Flynn, our council, says, "Well, you know, what if the Red Sox win another World Series and town meeting doesn't happen until the end of November?" We bought some extra time. But the goal is to get that dealt with tonight. The goal is to get that done with tonight. And then lastly, is having, achieve the funding, to go out to bid, open the bids, award the contracts, and complete all construction no later than November 15th of 2016. contracts, and complete all construction no later than November 15th of 2016. That agreement also stipulates that if Milton were not to meet any of these milestones, Canton would, as I said earlier, immediately disconnect us. Agreement was also made, the changes to the billing rate put us back to the wholesale plus a 10% basis. We kind of lost the leverage we thought we had in 2008. So, the first item was to conduct a system-wide capital improvement plan, look at a study. What that included was to put an RFP on the street. It allowed us to put a detailed description of getting a hydraulic model in place, so we could then model in all the various scenarios that might be resulting from the various things that we had available as alternatives, and to look at them hydraulically and understand what made sense physically, physically, if you will, by physics, and more important, more important, to become a platform from which to do some financial forecasting of what's the most advantageous alternatives. Contracted that engineering work was awarded by us in the spring of 2013. We already knew we needed to do this even before hammering out the agreement with Canton. So we were already moving in that direction. ADA Consulting Group is our consultant on this project. They conducted comprehensive fire tests, fire flow tests, and other pertinent data collection of our, and the things that they would need as inputs to create this balanced hydraulic model. Model was then used to analyze dozens of the various possibilities of configurations of what could happen, meaning if Canton's loop was to go away, and we made this type of improvement, and there was a fire over here, what would happen? In any combination, any maceration, macination of all of those things, we looked at, there were 30 different scenarios modeled, all of which narrowed down to the conclusions that were reached in the process. What it really determined in the end, by looking at all those different model runs and the scenarios, is that we were in fact correct in our concerns, that we would get pressure drops, dropping below the 20 PSI minimums that were required. We would in fact have fire flow rates on many areas to 500 gallons per minute, and in some instances, go to zero on the highest elevations in town, meaning fire department would roll up to a hydrant with no water in it. And lastly, that we would in fact have concerns for water quality in the outlying areas, meaning some of the dead-end streets along Hillside Avenue in that southwest corner of town as it approaches Canton, because it creates a long, long dead end where water use is not offset by high demand. I'm sorry. So, what it also did is allowed us to look at looping the transmission main through the town of Canton. Sorry for the typo, I just noticed it. And that's to follow along the existing path, and what we know is that's right in the shadow of Big Blue. Canton wanted to retain their water main on its own, and we would have to install our own new water main in their town, and we were looking at some four and a half miles of water main work installed in solid ledge, and it was ridiculously cost prohibitive, but we looked at it nonetheless as an alternative. What it also didn't do was, didn't really do much to address the concerns for our water pressure or fire flows and our water quality when in fact Canton were to shut the valves off. You know, in that interim period, we would have some serious concerns for meeting those minimum requirements. Wow. I guess I've just been talking, huh? I think this is where we are. Sorry about that. Trust me, it was all up there. Following notes, but doing a lot of ad-libbing as well. What it did also tell us is that we needed the storage tanks, all three of them. There was some thought at some point that maybe some of this work would result in the need to, the possibility of eliminating the tanks. Some changes in the MWRA system over the years has resulted in them serving us with water at a higher hydraulic grade line, higher pressure, if you will, and perhaps we'd have enough storage in larger diameter pipes that we would be able to meet the fire demand in volume, yet still maintain the pressures. But it didn't turn out that way. It turns out, in fact, we did need both tanks in Chickatobet Hill, and that they needed to be replaced because of the arrangement. We'll get into that in a little more detail later. It also concluded that we needed the tank on Big Blue Hill, but it was right on the bubble, on the, the ages are all the same, but the condition was a little bit better, and was actually made out of a different type of system altogether. So what that really required us to do is to look at it from a life cycle cost analysis, look at the rehabilitation that it would need today, and then on a recurring basis, the maintenance that that type of rehabilitation would require over the years, and look at it in a simple fashion as what sort of maintenance would be required on a brand-new tank. And quite frankly, it came right down to that the, it was more cost-effective to physically replace the entire tank with new, when you rent it in today's dollars. What was silent of that analysis, but it's important to point out, is that when it comes to borrowing, when you borrow on a new product, you can borrow it under a bond for a longer period of time, but when you're rehabilitating something or maintaining something, one, you may not be able to bond it at all, and if it's a major rehabilitation, you can borrow it for a less amount of time. Therefore, the debt service on a recurring basis is higher, but for a shorter period It also concluded that the concern with water quality was driven by the couple of issues, is our tanks filling up fully and not draining down other than during periods of extremely high demand. Heat of summer with irrigation going full blast and a major fire in town is the only time those tanks would move. And that's pretty much driven by an improvement that was made by the MWRA about 12 years ago, by putting in the new Bellevue Pump Station, which was what serves meter 55. By increasing that pressure, it gave us water at a higher grade line, and the tanks that used to oscillate up and down, no longer did. So by putting a pressure-reducing valve at our feed, we can then modulate our pressures based on our demand and based on what's happening in our system to allow that water to cycle up and down in the course of any given day and maintain that clean and safe drinking water. The thought on the Chickatobet tanks, there are two tanks up there now, and the thought would be to replace, to demolish both tanks and replace it with one tank at the equal elevation and of equal volume, or maybe slightly larger volume. The cost is actually less to put one tank in than two of the same volume, and that just makes common sense, I think. People get it, you know, people get that and understand that. So, with that knowledge that we had, I think it's important to point out, it's going to be out of sequence, but I'll just mention it now, those three tanks are all on DCR property. It's not the town of Milton property. So, one element in our evaluation was, that was out of our control, was the fact that DCR has a lot, a lot to say of what can or what cannot occur on their own land. So as a result, we were able to move forward, putting our plans and specifications together and getting a bid on the street for the pressure-reducing valve as a single contract. It was estimated it cost about $108,000 for engineering, $300,000 for installation. Those bids were open on October 9th, and construction bids were in fact $295,000. So our estimates are pretty good, and we're certainly within the budget, including contingency. It also included replacement of some very strategic pipelines in Canton Avenue, Harland Street, and Hillside Street. It's not the full length of those streets, but in very strategic areas along them. That's $125,000 in engineering costs, $2.8 million estimate in construction. Those bids were also opened on October 9th, and they came in at $2.4 million. So again, very high level of confidence. These were very competitively bid, you know, eight to 10 bidders on each of the contracts, all tight grouping with a couple of the people on the tail end who simply didn't want the Replacing all three storage tanks, that has an engineering cost of $398,000, $2.3 million for construction, as I said earlier, with DCR controlling what could be a pivotal question, which is the terms and conditions of how they would allow the work to go, specifically what they would put on their permit. We felt it was not prudent for us to put that on the street for a bid, only to get results that would almost certainly result in a change order right off the bat. Preemptive change order is something that's very disadvantageous to any construction project. So we are still awaiting DCR approval and permit and any conditions before we put that out to bid. Given the very competitive bidding and where we found the pricing from the estimate versus actual, we're confident that our estimates are accurate, and it would probably come in at the $2.3 million or under. So, what does all that mean? It's not just our mumbo jumbo and hydraulics and water. What it really comes right down to is we need to float a $5.4 million bond. Let me have the breakdown here. What it really is, is it's a $6.13 million total construction project cost, of which some of it we can, we can carry within our own water rate with capital work that we do every year as normal, some of which was the capital improvement for the study, which was already being commissioned and ongoing as the project started off. You know, netting out the need to borrow to complete all the work, all the remaining work is $5.4 million. Given the fact that the tanks are a durable large item, I think the bonding can go as long as 40 years, but Capital Improvement Committee thought it was more prudent to look at something on the order of 30-year bonding schedule and debt service schedule. So what that does is it has, if you look at the debt service requirement and run it back to today, this year, next year, and the following year, it has a negligible effect on the water rates that you guys are currently paying in FY15. It will have an increase, the debt service of about, round numbers of $200,000 in FY16, and it maxes out when we complete the project and fully bond, we'll be maxing out at $355,000 a year in debt service. That would carry the cost of this project for the next 30 years. And it's diminishing payment each year. As you pay down the interest, the future year's interest is less and less. But it maxes out just in that, in that second year, if you will. So what does it really mean? What does it mean to your pocket? I want to point out that the warrant does say, in the description, that, this is in the comments, that a $1,928 annually water and sewer cost, you know, ratepayer, will increase by about $132 annually, which is being an increase of 6.84% over current. I think that needs clarification. One is I, I'm sure I gave those numbers very early on in the process, and they're not exactly correct. It's 6.4% increase, thereabouts, total, and my slide will explain it, my next slide will explain it in more detail. But remember, this is a water project. It only affects your water rate, not your sewer rate. So you can't take the aggregate, and that $1,928 is what the average person in town here pays for water and sewer. So taking that as a percentage basis, you can't pull it back and calculate out what the effective annual cost is. So what that does boil down to, though, is, this is the correct slide to start with now, we're going to see about a 2.4%, like I said, negligible impact in the remainder of FY15, if any. 2.4% increase on the current water rate and only the water rate. And what that really means next year is you'll pay, each average person, each average household, if you will, will pay $17.50 more per year during FY17. And then in FY, excuse me, in FY16, in FY17, to fund that $355,000 of debt service, your bill would go up, your water bill portion would go up in addition 1.5%, and what that does is adds another $11 over what was the, what's going to be the new FY16 number, and that'll be your increase. So we're looking at an increase on the order of $28.50 per household on the worst year, and then diminish thereafter, each year thereafter. So math is pretty straightforward. If the average household now is paying $1980 a year for water and sewer, in FY16, it's $17.49 higher. That bill would become 1900, call it $2,000 even in round numbers, and then the year after, the very next year after that, it would be just about $2,008 per year total water and sewer. That's 10 minutes that took 20. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator, for doing so, but getting into questions. And our goal is to live up to the agreement with the town of Canton, which is to not, which is to allow us the full use of the time to get through town meeting, to finish building the project, get the work built by November of 2016, so that none of those concerns with firefighting, water quality, or pressure are the end result, because Canton will shut us off. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Leroy Walker, town meeting member, precinct 10, and a member of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Joe Orr, Tom, could you talk to the question on the impact to, of the debt service on homeowners? One of the things that we talked about during the course of this discussion was foregoing certain currently bonded DPW projects that might mitigate the impact on the water cost increases. One of those was metering replacement. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Lynch, you're recognized.
I actually don't have those numbers with me this evening. Springtown Meeting this past year authorized $600,000 in bonding to do attributable to sewer, and $600,000 bonding attributable to water. And what that was, was the first phase of the water meter replacement, the meter replacement program for town. It's likely to be a three-phase project, possibly four, or at least three and a half. The numbers that were in the FY15 rate that was already calculated included the debt service for that. What I don't have is the numbers for next year or the out years. The numbers I quoted were just due to this project. Does somebody at the table, main table, have that? I'm going to consult the town accountant, because I want to make sure I'm reading it
In the meantime, is the World Series playing right now? Anyone have the score? Oh, it's small, okay. While they're working on that, sir, did you wish to be recognized? Oh, did you? So did you hear the one? I appreciate your patience. I reminded you early this evening about the new rule, and the new rule allows the moderator to use discretion on presentations to go beyond 10 minutes, which I did give to Mr. Lynch. I think when the town is ready to spend $5,400,000, it's worth some consideration. Mr. Lynch, you're recognized. Do you purposefully address the question?
Yes, thank you. Sorry for the delay, sir. So we came in, in Springtown Meeting, like I said, a total of $1.2 million for the first phase water meter replacements. That has an effect in FY16 of increasing debt service by $4,500 negligible per year. In FY16, to $9,000, however, in 17, that same year that we're talking about for water, it increases it to total debt service of around $70,000 a year. Would be our intention, would have been our intention to come back three years in a row, one year plus two additional years, and ask for each infusion for the water meters, but in that first year, getting off the dime and getting the system selected and getting it in place, the implementation could, in fact, would result in delay of that request. So this coming Springtown Meeting, we would not be looking for another infusion of 1.2 million. So with that being said, we would delay only that next round of $70,000 by one year, and then two years in a row, two successive years in a row, and additional $70,000 for each of those additional phases. What I haven't done is calculate what that affects dollars and cents to every individual household and what accounts to one on an annual basis. But what I could say is that the water meter, water and sewer meter project that we're working on will not be fully implemented prior to this coming town meeting, and we will almost certainly not be coming back to the Springtown Meeting, annual town meeting, requesting for that second infusion for another full year.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Mr. Walker, you also. Thank you. Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Rosetti, town meeting member, precinct 7. I noticed that there was, if I did my math correctly, there's about 621,000 in engineering costs, and someone had mentioned to me that the Norfolk County government has an engineering department that we could possibly use. department that we could possibly use and that we pay for, that could possibly save us some money on this. Is that something that has been considered?
Yes.
Or something you could consider?
Yeah. No, casting no aspersions to the county government system. They do not have anywhere near the horsepower to pull off any sort of analysis of this sort, let alone do a hydraulic model of the sophistication that we have. They're great with transportation engineering, they're great with traffic studies, but they have no capability of doing something of this magnitude.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch. Ms. Lightman, you're recognized.
Cheryl Lightman, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. Can you clarify if these three tanks are for the whole town, or if it's just for the houses that are going to be cut off?
The three tanks serve the entire town. The entire water system serves the entire town. I mentioned at one point in my presentation, there's a pressure-reducing valve in the police station, in the, on the transmission main in front of the police station. If there's a fire on the high, on the low-pressure side in East Milton, and it senses that we've got a big demand on our system, that pressure-reducing valve opens up, and we feed into that low system from the high system, and vice versa, being true. So these tanks are an integral part to the entire town, as do all the ratepayers. Everybody pays the same rate regardless of where they live in town.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to be recognized? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Mike Zulus, Precinct 3, Town Meeting Member. Joe, if I understood the slides, it seemed like the bids were about $400,000 less than you anticipated, and I was wondering if any thought was given to seeking an appropriation for $400,000 less for $5 million rather than $5.4 million?
Great considerations been given on that. It's no different than any capital project that comes through every single year from the Capital Improvement Committee. When you go out to, you get the full authorization. It's an authorization and an appropriation. That's the action that's taking place this evening, I believe. I'm not sure. Is that simple majority, or is that two-thirds?
The simple majority.
It is simple majority. All right, thank you. The truth be told is, when you go out to bond, what the, bonding for what the actual cost is in the end. So any adjustment is actually realized when you hit the bond market on the true value and not the full value. So you're going to, you're going to bond it and borrow it at that lesser amount at that time when it's known. And the result will be savings on debt service when it actually hits the market and we know what we end up paying. So we're not in a position, I think I'm confident that we're, that our pricing has been good and our estimates have been good, but I'm not in a position now to back any, any numbers out of, out of the total.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this article, this motion, excuse me? Seeing none, all those in favor, excuse me, Town Council, Mr. Lynch?
I'm sorry.
Mr. Flint, rather. Town Council is pointing out, in fact, we do have borrowing, and so as a motion to have borrowing, it will require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
I declare a two-thirds vote. Thank you. We're on to Article 3, which you will find on page 12. It is to establish a sewer enterprise fund, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which would authorize the town to establish a separate account classified as a sewer enterprise fund, provided that such acceptance shall be effective on July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen, and is recommended the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which would authorize the town to establish a separate account classified as a sewer enterprise fund, effective fiscal year 2016. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? This will require a majority vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. Article 4, Establish a Water Enterprise Fund, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which would authorize the town to establish a separate account classified as the Water Enterprise Fund, provided that such acceptance shall be effective in July 1, 2015, and to act on anything related thereto. This is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It is recommended the town vote to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F and 1/2 of the Massachusetts General Laws, which would authorize the town to establish a separate account classified as a water enterprise fund, effective fiscal year 2016. This will also require a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. It's unanimous. At this point, I'm going to be recognizing the Chair of our Capital Planning Committee, excuse, excuse me, not a Capital Planning Committee, Emily Ennis, who is a member of our Planning Board, and also heading up, I want to get it, I want to get it right, Emily, so I'm struggling to find it.
Master Plan Committee.
The Master Plan Committee, thank you. I was looking for that hint. And so in order to allow, to accommodate important speakers related to this, want to move this to tonight. So I'd like to entertain a motion that we move to consider Article 13. I'm looking for a motion to consider Article 13.
So moved.
It's moved and it's been seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Oppose, no. The motion carries. Ms. Ennis, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was considering a PowerPoint presentation, but Ewan wouldn't let me, so I just have a few comments. Emily Keys Ennis, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3, Member of the Planning Board and Chairman of the Master Plan Committee. Good evening. I would like to first thank the moderator for allowing our consultant team to speak here tonight. Daphne Politis of Community Circle is our lead consultant, and she is here to answer any questions you may have on the draft master plan, which has been available on the town's website since September. There are three things I would like you to take away from tonight's meeting. There has been a robust public process. Article 13 is an important step in this initiative. You, as town meeting members and elected officials, are a key part of the next phase. Almost 500 people have participated in two public forums, three public workshops, three open houses, and interviews with department heads, business owners, and representatives of nonprofit institutions. The Master Plan Committee and consultant team had a table at Celebrate Milton, provided displays at Town Hall and the Milton Public Library, and gave out flyers at the East Milton Halloween Stroll. I think the candy may have been more popular. It is fitting that the public process for the second phase of the master plan should end here tonight with your contributions, as Town Meeting began the master plan process with its appropriation for the first phase at the May 2012 Annual Town Meeting. Tonight, you should have picked up two documents. The four-page document with the map is yours to take home. It will be available to the public starting tomorrow. The two-page document lists the 20 key recommendations and is part of an interactive exercise that the Master Plan Committee has used throughout the month of October. We ask people to give us their top three choices of the 20 key recommendations identified by the consultant team. So far, the top five are as follows, and you are the first to hear this. Number five is pass inclusionary zoning. Four is provide small-scale commercial uses in the neighborhoods. Three is tied, ensure that new development is in keeping with the town's character, and develop a conservation strategy. Number two is preserve Milton's historic characteristics. And finally, number one is create a version, a vision, rather, for each commercial district. The Master Plan Committee would like to know how you, the Town Meeting, would prioritize these recommendations, and we ask you to participate in this exercise. Please return the two-page document with your top three choices to Cheryl Taggias, Bill Clark, Brian Fers, or me tonight. Please feel free to add any other comments. All will be recorded and given to the consultant team for inclusion in the final report. The consultant team has all of the other public input from the past few months, and will incorporate this information and the results of tonight's input into the final master plan. The team will present this master plan to the Planning Board in November, and the Planning Board will review the final plan and vote in either November or December. Town Meeting has an important role in the next step. Tonight, you vote on whether to establish a master plan implementation committee. This committee would be responsible for monitoring the process of implementing the recommendations of the master plan, recommending certain steps to the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, and reporting to this Town Meeting on an annual basis the progress made to date and the steps to be taken in the future. The town has made a significant investment in time and money in creating this plan. The implementation committee would help ensure that the plan is a living document and not a dusty doorstop. The final plan will be posted on the town's website in November. There are three sections. The implementation plan, that provides action steps to help us, the town, move forward to meet the specific goals we have expressed throughout this process. An inventory of existing conditions, that provides important data about what we already have, and the public input received throughout this process. The public input is instructive. So many people took time to write about their hopes and fears for this town, and we should review this section for an understanding of what those hopes and fears are. Sometimes these desires are mutually exclusive, and that presents challenges for us as we move forward. There are several lessons that I take from this process. It is hard to reach people. We used email lists, both formal and informal, local newspapers, both print and online, flyers, the public notices list, and Susan Galvin's excellent Town Meeting Member email list, if you're not on it, you should sign up, to reach out to people. We contacted religious institutions, town boards and committees, and neighborhood associations. We used the town's website and had a Tumblr site. People are busy, but they do care, if you can reach them to let them know what is happening. This will always be a challenge for any initiative in town. People are frustrated with the lack of diversity in local businesses. If you are an entrepreneur, there are plenty of ideas in the public input for services needed in town and demand to support those ideas. People feel that town government is not meeting all their needs, and it may not be possible to meet all needs with the resources we have available, but there is a perception problem that we, as town officials, need to address. People feel that our nonprofit institutions are not contributing enough to the community as a whole. People value the physical character of this town and the historic and natural resources that contribute to this character. Many people feel that we do not do enough to protect, advocate for, or enhance access to these resources. There are still disagreements about where the town is heading, and some of those disagreements are generational, comparable to the demographic changes we will be experiencing over the next 10 to 20 years. There is, however, full agreement that everybody loves living here and loves Milton and wants it to be the best Milton that it can be. The next steps are up to you and to every other resident of this town. Please read the final master plan when it is published, and know that its success rests on the commitment of all residents to advocate for and support the implementation of these recommendations. Please begin by voting yes on Article 13 tonight. I would like to thank the other members of the Master Plan Committee for their hard work on this process. Stephen Affinato, Dick Burke, John Cronin, Brian Fers, Tom Hurley, Taber Keely, John Kiernan, Glenn Pavlicek, John Sheldon, Wally Sisson, Cheryl Taggias, Paul Travers, and past members David DeFilippo, Ellen Denoyer, and Enrique Silva. On their behalf, I would also like to thank you for your support of this process, and to the department heads, boards and committees, especially the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and Warrant Committee for their support of both this article and the entire process, Milton business owners and nonprofits, Anne Marie Fagan, Bill Clark, Emily Martin, Susan Galvin, Jim Skroy, and Paula Rizzi, all of the people at Milton Access TV, Frank Schroth, The Milton Times, our consultant team, and most of all, to the residents of Milton who participated in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ennis. Now, Mrs. Ennis was referring to Article 13, which is to establish a master plan implementation committee, but you do not yet have a motion in front of you, which you will have right now. It is recommended the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to appoint a master plan implementation committee for the purposes of reviewing the implementation plan within the town's master plan, established under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D, at least twice annually, and to recommend to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen the actions necessary to implement such a plan, including timing, resources, and responsibilities. Said committee is expected to report to the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen at least twice annually. Said committee will report to Town Meeting at least annually, at the Town Meeting regularly scheduled in October, or if no such meeting is held, the next annual Town Meeting. The report will contain the following information. A, implementation steps accomplished within the past year. B, anticipated steps to be accomplished within the next two years. And C, resources, including Town Meeting appropriations, or other actions necessary to complete those steps. Said committee shall consist of five members, to be appointed jointly by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen, for terms that are renewed annually. One member shall be a member of the Planning Board or its designee. A second member, or and a second member, shall be a member of the Board of Selectmen or its designee. The other members shall have expertise in planning, architecture, economic development, landscape architecture, real estate, or other relevant fields. The Master Plan Implementation Committee will exist for 10 years from the date of establishment by Town Meeting. Such term may be extended by the vote, by vote of Town Meeting. At the end of 10 years, said committee shall report to the Planning Board, the Board of Selectmen, and Town Meeting its recommendation as to whether the master plan shall be updated under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 81D. This will require a majority vote. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Henry Carr, Precinct 10. I was just wondering if, in my case, if, I would like to turn the paper in tomorrow night, as we're having meeting, and I don't have, I'd like to think about it before I make answers. The second thing is, is this going to cost any additional amount of money?
Ms. Ennis, you're recognized.
Thank you, yes. First of all, if you want to turn your homework assignment in tomorrow night, you can give it to Bill Clark. He'd be happy to take those. And no, the establishment of the implementation committee will not cost any additional money. It is possible that over the years, some of the implementation steps would do so, but those would go through the usual public process of either Board of Selectmen or Planning Board, or perhaps some other board and committee sponsorship to the Warrant Committee and then to the Town Meeting. But the implementation committee itself will not cost additional funds.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the recommendation of the warrant committee, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
No.
The motion carries. So now we are back to Article 5, which you will find on page 13 of your warrant. And Article 5 is the Capital Improvement Planning Committee Library Appointment. It is submitted by the Board of Trustees, and I'm going to go and just read the recommendation, which you will find at the top of page 14. It is recommended the town vote to amend Chapter 4, Section 17.1 of the General Law Laws by deleting the words "eight" and inserting in their place the words "nine," by adding the words "one member of the Board of Library Trustees" after the words "school committee," and by referring to the required number of board and committee members with words or numbers, so that Section 17.1 shall read. The Board of Selectmen shall establish and appoint a committee of nine persons to be known as the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. Said committee shall be comprised of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Warrant Committee, one member of the Planning Board, one member of the School Committee, one member of the Board of Library Trustees, the Town Accountant, the Consolidated Facilities Director. Facilities Director, two members of the community at large. Members shall serve for one-year term, beginning on the 15th day of August in the year of appointment. The committee shall choose its own offices. This will require a majority vote, and at this point, I'd like to recognize the Chair of our Board of Library Trustees, Christine Hardland. Ms. Hardland, you're recognized.
Thank you. Christine Hardland, precinct — town meeting member, Precinct 2, and Chair of the Board of Library Trustees. In April 2014 this year, the library celebrated the fifth anniversary of their new building. This new building represents a significant capital investment that was funded by the Town of Milton, a state grant, and private donations. These funds were applied wisely to maximize the space and minimize the staff that was required to support the current and the future use of the library. This new building has become a valued community service. Our circulation numbers and attendance have increased steadily since the renovations were completed. The Board of Library Trustees want to protect this and other capital investments made by the town by participating in the membership of the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. We are advocating a change to the makeup of the committee by adding one more member from the Milton Public Library Board of Trustees. History has shown that many of our town buildings and assets — this would be the library, fire department, and our schools — have not been sufficiently funded for ongoing maintenance, and Milton has been faced with many large renovations, rebuilding, and bonding articles to make up for this in the past. The current Board of Library Trustees has five previous Warrant Committee members on it today. The trustees oversee a very large investment by the town, the state, and the taxpayers, and are committed to prioritizing appropriate funding to maintain all assets, not just the library, by participating in this committee. I urge you all to please vote yes with the recommendation of the Warrant Committee for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chichello, you're recognized.
Anthony Chichello, town meeting member from Precinct 4. I support the article at this time, but I would urge folks to pay attention to the comment of the Warrant Committee at the front of the warrant about our capital improvement, our capital planning process. I think we might want to, as a town, think differently about how we want to do this kind of planning, and I think it's really not an effective model to have essentially overworked members of the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, and a variety of other committees get together periodically to try to deal with the long-term capital needs of the town. I think we need a different model that puts people that can devote themselves to that issue squarely, have expertise in building and other types of capital needs, and that can look at these things on a systematic basis. Now, that committee will clearly need the input and information that all of the departments need, but I think we really need to think about a whole new model for how we do the capital planning in town. I think we've started to revitalize that process, but we still haven't effectively, for example, figured out a way to, on a comprehensive basis, think in a broader, more forward-looking way about what the costs are going to be, number one, and, number two, how we're going to fund them. At various times, 10 or 15 years ago or more, there was discussion about trying to establish and fund various accounts so that the town can even out the capital costs. I think all of those things need to be thought about in a more broad way, so I would urge the Selectmen and the Warrant Committee and the others to think about a new plan for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hiss, you're recognized.
Hi, Bob Hiss, Precinct 3. I think Mr. Chichello's on to something, and in light of that, and also, at the risk of getting in trouble at home, because I'm married to a former library trustee, I think this is the wrong way to go address the capital needs process, because I think it could risk turning this into a single-issue advocacy board, where everybody that has a capital need believes they have to have representation directly on the board, rather than trusting the members who have a broader interest at heart in the town. For example, the facilities director, representatives of the Selectmen, citizens at large. I think we form these citizen committees in order to be able to say, "Let's go take a few people who are going to dig into this," perhaps even more so, as Mr. Chichello was recommending, which I agree with, but to have them go represent the issues at large and try to balance those, being somewhat without a dog in the fight. And as soon as we start loading up a committee like this with people that have a dog in the fight, I'm worried it just becomes then a vote of the library versus the school versus the cemetery versus something else. I think it's — I applaud the sentiment of preserving the buildings. I think it's the wrong way to use this committee to go do that, so I would — I'm going to vote no for that reason. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hiss. Katie Collin, Chair of our Board of Selectmen, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We support the article and the library's request to serve on the committee. We wanted to just mention that we have already asked the Government Study Committee to take a look at the composition of the capital committee and consider whether the current format is the right model, or whether it should be a committee similar to the Warrant Committee that's appointed with 15 members who are not currently serving on other committees. So we have had some of our own discussion about the issues that have been raised, and the Government Study Committee has indicated that they're willing to take a look at that issue. It's not the highest priority on their schedule right now. They have a lot of other matters that they're taking up at the moment, but this is something that they will take a look at down the road, this year. We believe it'll be this year, but not immediately, but at some point soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collin. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Can I remind you, it's a majority vote. All those in favor of this recommendation of the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
We're now on to Article 6. Change of purpose: Land off of — land off landfill access road. And I'm going to read the recommendation at the top of page 15, since it's essentially a reprint of the article. "It is recommended the town vote to transfer care, custody, and control of the land described below from the Board of Selectmen for municipal dump purposes to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes. Which land is shown on the Town of Milton's assessor's map is that portion of Section 1, Block 38D, Lot 9, located west of the former landfill access road and containing plus or minus 3.0725 acres, and that portion of Section 1, Block 38D, Lot 8, located west of the former landfill access road and containing plus or minus .28 acres." Now, this is submitted by the Board of Selectmen. It will require a two-thirds vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? Yes, sir, you're recognized.
Henry Carr, Precinct 10. I'm just curious, what is the — another purpose more beneficial to the town, that a general municipal purposes seems very vague to me?
Understood. More clarification.
I would rather have more specific.
I'll recognize our Chair of our Board of Selectmen, Katie Collin. Katie, actually, before you begin, since this sounds like a good time, I want to note that we also have our new town assessor in the hall tonight, has been selected. It's Robert Bushweger. Robert, I saw you a little earlier. There he is. Welcome to the town. Best of luck. Ms. Collin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hopefully, many of you — I don't know if the town clerk has email addresses for everyone, but the town clerk did email out a letter on Friday that we wrote to town meeting members, and there should have been a copy at the table on your way in tonight to explain a little bit about what the intent of this article is. So we probably could have done a better job explaining this. This is really a matter of — it's a housekeeping article in the sense that it's not going to do anything immediately other than change the designation of the land. This is land on Randolph Avenue. Planning Director's going to put up a map for us so we can take a look at it. It's off the access road of the former landfill, and since the 1950s, it's been classified for use as a landfill. And most of you know the landfill closed back in the late 1990s. It's been capped and closed. There's no — there's no intent to use the land for landfill purposes any longer, but in order to do anything else with this property, the designation needs to be changed from landfill use to general municipal use. Now, the reason it's before you tonight is that the Milton Animal League is looking for — to build a new home, either at the current site, at the town farm, or at an alternate site. And because there are issues with the town farm procedural issues, it's — the land is held in trust, the approvals of the Attorney General would be needed, of the Superior Court would be required, and the animal shelter has been looking for a very long time. They've raised a lot of money. The building's in terrible condition. They're really looking to do something sooner rather than later. So they've asked the Board to identify an alternate site. Randolph Ave was suggested, because it's town-owned land, it was suggested a few years ago that this might be a good location. There's nothing definite. There's no guarantee that the shelter will wind up at Randolph Ave, but it's a possible solution for the problem, which is finding a location. So there's really no point in the Board having extensive discussions with the Animal League if the land we're talking about is designated only for landfill use. So that's what all we're trying to do here tonight, is change the designation so that it won't be designated for a use that's no longer contemplated. It will just be for general municipal use, which could be really used for many purposes, very broad use designation. We are — at the moment, the Animal League has put together a draft memorandum of understanding, and that's being reviewed by Town Council. The plan is for us to have further discussions with the animal shelter, but again, I just want to caution everyone, there's no guarantee that this is where the animal shelter will wind up. There's a lot of issues that need to be worked out: financial issues, day-to-day operation issues, ownership of the building. So there's a lot that we need to do, but this is the first step in the process. All it does is designate — if the town planner can direct us to where the landfill access road is. Randolph Ave is on the far left.
Here is the access road right here. This land here is the golf course. This is the access road that goes around the golf course. We're talking about the land that's on the north side of the access road.
There's a quarter acre parcel shown in pink, and the three acre parcel is shown in purple. The animal shelter would only need about an acre, so by changing the designation, all we're doing really is opening up the potential, and that's a key word, potential future use of this land, for the animal shelter or for some purpose that would be decided through the public process, through public meetings, through discussion, through open meetings. So I hope that clarifies what the purpose of it is. The Warrant Committee commented about a beneficial use. You know, what we had presented to the Warrant Committee was that it's regarding the animal shelter, so I think that's what their — Ted can speak for the Warrant Committee, but that's what the comment was really directed at, was the animal shelter.
Thank you. Mr. Chichello, you're recognized.
Anthony Chichello, precinct — town meeting member from Precinct 4. I just had a question as to what uses this would open up and what process would thereafter be required. For example, if the animal shelter were to build a structure up there, presumably they'd want to finance that and might need a long-term lease, and do the Selectmen have the authority to enter into that kind of lease without any further town meeting approval if this were approved for any purposes, et cetera? I think town meeting members may want to know what this opens up and what the process would be. Thanks.
Mr. Moderator, town meeting members, the answer to the question depends upon if a building will be on the property. For example, in the situation being described as a possible site for an animal shelter, the Selectmen have the authority to lease a land with a building on it for 30 years under Massachusetts general laws. So the answer to the question is that they do not have the authority to have a long-term lease longer than 30 years. That would require an act of the General Court, but within those parameters, they could either rent the land — municipal purposes is pretty broad — or, in this case, to rent the land for the purposes of a — an animal shelter far up to 30 years.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Yes, sir, you wish to be recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steve Frizzetti, town meeting member, Precinct 7. There seems to be a lot of land there, a lot of different types of uses, potentially, and there's no immediate need for anything right now. Possibly consider selling it to make some money, or at least a larger lot. I don't think you could sell a .28 acre up there. There may be a developer may be interested in it. Until it — maybe put this off until maybe there is an immediate need.
Thank you. Mrs. McHattrick, you're recognized.
Mary McHattrick, Precinct 1, town meeting member, but I'm here tonight representing Milton Animal League as their attorney, and I thought I'd just like to make a couple of comments to clarify. First of all, to say thank you to the Board of Selectmen for putting this article on the warrant and agreeing to explore possibilities for sites in addition to the Governor Stoughton land, which the Animal League continues to be keenly interested in, if it's possible to cite a shelter there. Second, I want to make it clear that the Milton Animal League, which is a nonprofit organization, has donated its time for many years now to run the animal shelter and to raise funds to operate it. The animal shelter is the town's animal shelter, however, and the Milton Animal League isn't proposing and does not propose that it will operate its own animal shelter, purchase land to do that. Instead, they've asked me to work with the Board of Selectmen to try to develop a memorandum of understanding and some agreements about exactly how a shelter would be built, who would fund it, how much it would cost. Where it would be is a separate issue, which we're not even addressing in the MOU. And then finally, and most importantly, how would a shelter be paid for? How would the operation of the shelter be paid for? The League is proposing that it would continue to provide operating volunteers, it would continue to raise money to run the shelter, and that it would raise all of the money to build the shelter, but that this would be a town building and that the construction process would be a public construction process. That's our proposal. We have not yet met with the Board of Selectmen to iron out any of these parameters. We would like to be able to continue the process of discussion, and as the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen has pointed out, we can't talk about continuing and proceeding and making progress if no sites — and I put an S on that — can be identified. Our suggestion is that this site, this land, since it's no longer being used for the landfill, be designated for general municipal purposes, which would be the ordinary designation for such land, and the town then continue to explore how it should be used. Whether this is the best choice, that some portion be used for an animal shelter, isn't clear at this point. But town meeting should take this vote, and Milton Animal League strongly asks you to take this vote to at least make this land available for possible uses, and let the discussion continue, and let us, as a town, come up with the best decision for how best to cite an animal shelter, if there is to be an animal shelter, and what other purposes there may be in the future for this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? May I remind you to take two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no?
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 7 is to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 3, Subsection C, signs in a business district. I'm going to go right to the bottom of page 15 and read the recommendation. "It is recommended the town vote to amend Section 10 of the general bylaws, known as the zoning bylaws, by adding the following language and subparagras at the end of Paragraph 5 of Subsection C, Section 3." of subsection C, section three. Exterior illuminated signs shall also comply with the following. A, exterior sign illumination. Signs may be illuminated during regular business hours after dusk or before sunrise, and if so illuminated, shall be illuminated by a stationary, steady light. Illumination shall be shielded or directed so that it does not shine directly onto neighboring properties. Signs, a sign shall not be illuminated by blinking, flashing, or fluttering lights, or by other illuminating devices that have a changing light intensity, brightness, or color. High-intensity lights shall not be used, provided that the Board of Selectmen, for good cause and superior design, may authorize lights that have no adverse impacts. B, exterior signs with moving parts or text. Signs shall display no moving parts and shall not provide a changing message, text, or appearance, provided that signs may display the time and temperature, and further provided that the Board of Selectmen, for good cause and superior design, may authorize signs which display moving parts or text, and which have no adverse impacts. And I'd recognize the Chairman of our Planning Committee, Alexander Whiteside. This will require two-thirds vote. Mr. Whiteside, you're recognized.
Alexander Whiteside, Chairman of the Planning Board. This article is to briefly put a few guidelines on the illumination of signs in the business district, only in the business district, and also to provide for signs with moving Basically, it says, no, no lights which create a nuisance, and then, no bright lights, a number of other things. And then it says, but the selectmen have some discretion. And if someone comes in with a, a good proposal for a sign, that selectmen, if it has no adverse impacts, can authorize it. And we're not trying to, these are just a few rules, and the selectmen have the final say. And I think it's a, a good way to deal with the issue of illuminating signs in the business district. So the Planning Board recommends that you, you pass this. Oh. And, the Planning Board thinks that there should be an extra comma in A, exterior sign illumination. It says, signs may be illuminated during regular business hours after dusk, and we think it should be, and was intended to be, during regular business hours, comma, after dusk, or before sunrise. So a comma after the words, hours.
So, for clarification, Mr. Whiteside, since this was submitted by both the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, I'm going to assume, as Chairman of the Planning Board, that you are going to accept this comma as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
I looked to the Warrant Committee and, and the Board of Selectmen to see if they would accept it as a, and I'm seeing a lot of heads. Very good. So the comma has been officially added in Section A, after the word hours. Let me read it up to that point so there's no confusion. This is at the top of page 16. A, exterior sign illumination, colon, signs may be illuminated during regular business hours, comma. That's where the comma is being added. Yes. Mr. Hayes, Chairman of our Warrant Committee, you're recognized.
Hi. Ted Hayes, town meeting member, Precinct Three, and Chairman of your Warrant Committee. I just want to point out that this comma has changed the meaning somewhat, and it, and it makes one of the sentences in the comment invalid. So the idea that it, where, where the comment says that it prohibits the use of illuminated signs during daylight hours is incorrect. It does not do that, so you should be aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. And again, Mr. Hayes, that's part of the comment directly following the recommendation.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Janet Evans, Precinct Six. I just have a question about the wording that have no adverse impacts. I just wonder if that gives the selectmen, if, if that kind of limits things too much, and if it should be something that would just say, for good cause, superior design, or reasonable need, the selectmen could authorize waivers. I just think when you say no adverse impact, that's, kind of limits the selectmen. So I just had a question as to whether that was...
Ma'am, so I'm, here's, here's what I'm going to suggest. You're asking a question. Let's have the question addressed, and perhaps you'd be satisfied.
Okay.
Otherwise, it sounded like you wanted to make a motion to amend, which I'd, I'd need you to grab a form and, and get the verbiage.
Well, I think the question, if I can get the question answered, if the selectmen feel that that's appropriate.
Very, very well. Thank you. And you, you may wait to make sure that you're satisfied. I'll recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. Oh, I guess I'm going to reckon, Mr. Whiteside, did you want to address the question? Ms. Carlin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Because there are sign review, sign, design review guidelines that are in place, and that can be modified at any time, and there's a sign review committee that's always the first step in the process, we think there are enough safeguards that we're comfortable with the existing language that would give us some guidance and some direction.
Thank you. Ms. Evans, are you, did you want to address any follow-up, or? No? Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ellen DeNoyer, Precinct Two. In, I'd like to clarify the purpose of the comma, because I think there's some confusion, and this relates to the Warrant Committee's comment. Is the intention that signs can be illuminated when the business is closed? And is the intention that signs can be illuminated after dusk or before sunrise, suggests to me, all night long? So it's not clear to me the grammar of the sentence, and whether during regular business hours, comma, after dusk or before sunrise, means during regular business hours, or all night long. So I, I don't think that the language is clear, with all due respect to the grammar. Thank you.
Very well. Okay. Mr. Whiteside, you recognize the purpose of addressing the question?
Well, the language isn't totally clear. But, since we use the word "may" rather than "shall," I, as I say, this is meant to, the, the selectmen are meant to be the final arbiter of these signs, and this sentence could be better, and we may fix it in the future, but it certainly would be helpful to have this article in place now, and, and the sentence does not, does not detract from the purpose particularly.
Mr. Whiteside, while you're there, and actually, the Board of Selectmen, if you're listening also, I'd like you, the, the member raised two points that I think bear addressing. Is the intention to allow illumination when the business is closed? And if it's after dusk and before sunrise, is the intention for all night long?
The intention was not to allow, it was to be during business hours. But, after, I, the intention is not entirely clear.
Ms. Carlin, you're recognized.
I just could confirm with the Town Planning Director that when, when a sign, an illuminated sign, would have to get approval from the Board, and as an example, the sleepy sign that is on the former Kennedy Carpet Building in, on Granite Ave, when that, when a decision is made to allow that sign to be illuminated after hours, there are certain hours that are attached to the decision, so that by, whether it's 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock in a given case, the hours are set forth in the decision when the illuminated sign is approved. So I, I believe in the sleepy's case, it's, it's been about a year, but it's, I think it's 11 o'clock at night that the lights have to be turned off. The sleepy's sign on that roof is illuminated during the day, and that generated the need for the comma, because we, we do want the, the signs to be able to be illuminated for the business owners during the day. So the comma solves that problem, but when the Board approves an illuminated sign, the decision itself will have the hours in it. And hopefully that answers the question about what time at night they would be turned off.
Thank you. Sargestino, you're recognized.
Diana Giglio Agostino, Precinct Nine. I was a math economics major, so excuse me if this is grammatically wrong also, but I'm wondering, because the Warrant Committee Chair pointed out that the comment was addressing the intent of the language, if we shouldn't be considering writing, and I'm, we're in a school, we should have an English major somewhere, if it shouldn't mean, be written, during, after dusk, or before sunrise, business hours, instead of the word regular? Because if you do it, during, after dusk, or before sunrise, business hours, then you're only talking about the nighttime.
So, Ms. Agostino, you're making a, I believe you're making a motion to amend?
I'm only bringing it up for discussion, because it sounds like the comment...
Fair enough.
...is fair.
I, I think that the Chairman of the Selectmen makes a good point, in that the license will specify when the illumination can occur. But I do point out, the use of the word "may" is permissive. You may do it, you may not do it, and therefore, the sentence doesn't have a great deal of substance. But, the rest of it, the rest of it is good. I, I, it, it doesn't hurt, and I suggest that it could be adopted as is, with the comma, and would be fine.
Okay. So, and Mr. Lovely, I'll recognize you next, if you give me one minute. So I believe what I'm, what I've heard the two last speakers, the Chair of our Board of Selectmen and the Chair of our Planning Board, have said, is that there's a process with the Board of Selectmen that will specifically delineate when illumination can be done for any particular business, and that the wording here, since it's permissive, is more all-encompassing, and basically, it may not be perfect, but it's okay. Is that a, is that a FIA summation? Mr. Whiteside? Thank you. Mr. Lovely, you're recognized.
Burn Lovely, Precinct Nine. I apologize for injecting myself in this conversation, but I can't resist. First, if I may, I would ask the Moderator to address a question to the Chair of the School, of the Board of Selectmen. Is there any rule by law or provision that says that a light may not, or a sign may not be lit after a given time at night? Is there such a regulation? All right. So what this means, if you add the comma, I can't believe I'm talking. This says, I think, a flat statement, that if I have a sign, and I want it to be lit, this says to me that I may illuminate that sign during regular business hours. So let's assume my regular business hours are nine to five, so I can light it during the day. Comma, it says, I may illuminate it after dusk, with no end time, so therefore, to me, that means I can illuminate it after dusk, until at least midnight, but then, says I can illuminate it before sunrise, so I'll assume I can illuminate it from midnight to sunrise. So there's nothing in this rule that says the select, there's nothing in this rule that says the selectmen have the authority to overrule this law, which is in effect what it is. It's a regulation, gives me a right, and it's absolute. I don't care when the damn light is lit, but I'd like to know what the law says, and if, and with the comma, to me, it says that I can do it during regular business hours, comma, I can do it after dusk, and then it says in the, in the disjunctive, or, I can do it before sunrise. To me, that means I can do it anytime after dusk and anytime before sunrise. That's what I think it means. If that's what we want, that's great. I hope the light is in your neighborhood, not mine. Thank you.
So, good news, folks. And I'm letting them still work a minute. This, this was submitted by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, and every recommendation before you has to be supported by the Warrant Committee, or at least their position. And it looks like... like they're very close to adopting a friendly amendment that will clarify this and hopefully satisfy several of the speakers that raised concerns. When I left the table, I thought the verbiage was ready. I'm sure it's getting close. What is in a word? Turns out with law, a lot. For those of you who have, have looked ahead, you'll note that the next article, Article 8, has to do with amending the zoning bylaws for signs in a residence district. And you'll also, I hope, have picked up, and if not, this would be probably a good time to do that, a revised recommendation, which is in pink pages, that was located in the box over here. Quick show of hands, does everyone have this? Yes or no? If you have, if you have it, raise your hand. Okay. If, all right, if you don't have it and you'd like it, raise your hand. Okay. Someone in the Warrant Committee would like us. That's really not even funny. That's not funny. Oh, it is. I've been doing my best to fill the time here. I know we're going to get to a good end. Ms. Dennis from the Master Planning Committee has suggested this is a wonderful time to work on that questionnaire that she handed out. And, and to the questions that was asked earlier, you could still work on it, maybe pass it in tomorrow night.
So, I always shoot to the end by 10:00, I always shoot to the end. But, if you can't, this next, the big decision, Article 8, I think we've got two hours, they're not just going to be, it's the signs in residence. There'll be a lot more discussion here. My guess is if we did that one, we would be at the 10 o'clock, by 10:00, that particular one, and that would be a good break.
I've been told we now have a change to the recommendation, that will be anticipated to be presented as a friendly amendment, in that it has the support of the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, and the Warrant Committee. Less is more, and so there'll be no mistake on my part. It is written out, and I recognize the Chairman of our Warrant Committee, Mr. Ted Hayes, to read the revised recommendation. And Mr. Hayes, as you, as you read it, we are concentrating still on Section A. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. You're recognized.
Ted Hayes, so, the change, the change I will read, I will include punctuation. I'm sorry the A comma sank this ship, but anyway, here we go. A, this is, this is indeed a revised recommendation based on a friendly amendment. So, if you've wanted to follow along, A, exterior sign illumination, semicolon. Oh, sorry, colon, colon.
A colon again, so that you imagine what a semicolon would do.
Obscuring my, blotting my copy. Oh, well. Okay, here we go. Signs may be illuminated during regular business hours and for a period of time before and after, as determined by the Board of Selectmen, comma, and if so illuminated, comma, shall be by a stationary and steady light, period.
I would like you actually to read that one more time, Mr. Hayes, because there's enough verbiage to it, that I want the members to be reasonably clear on it. I'm not necessarily encouraging challenges to it, I just want you to understand what he has.
All right. Again, from the top. A, parenthetically, exterior sign illumination, colon, signs may be illuminated during regular business hours and for a period of time before and after, as determined by the Board of Selectmen, comma, and if so illuminated, comma, shall be by a stationary and steady light, period.
And then, Mr. Hayes, does the rest of that section, beginning with illumination, shall be shielded and directed to continue as it was?
Uh, yes.
Thank you.
No change.
Okay. All right, so, this has been, the, the motion before you is always presented as the motion of the Warrant Committee. The Chairman of the Warrant Committee has now proposed a slight amendment to that motion. That's been accepted by the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, I was told before the break, before we come back. So, this is now the main motion before the Boardy. Does anyone wish to speak to the main motion? Remind you this, we'll take a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of the recommendation of the Warrant Committee say aye?
Aye.
Close, no?
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. Article 8. Now, if you thought Article 7 was fun. Article 8, more on a serious note here, too, is to amend zoning bylaws, Section 3, Subsection B, signs in a residential district. When this warrant was printed, if you, if you go past the next couple of pages, and go to the very bottom of page 19, you will see the Warrant Committee had no recommendation at the time of printing. However, tonight, in the box, beside the room, you will see there now is a recommendation, one in pink, that there are no page numbers on here, and maybe that's because of how many pages. There's one, two, three. Okay, just three. It ends, there's other articles here. I have been told, and I'm going to look to the Chair of the Warrant Committee. Give him a nudge. I have been told, Mr. Hayes, I have been told by Mr. Hayes, prior to the meeting, that the revised recommendation handed out now in this pink sheet, this, there's several articles addressed here, but the, but the article we're considering, Article 8, is the first few pages, is essentially an exact rewrite of the article as so stated in the warrant, except a change of one word in several places, and that word was changing three to four. Is that correct, Mr. Hayes?
Thank you, Ted Hayes. There are a number of changes.
Okay, so that did change.
And they are highlighted by the underlining.
Okay. This is a zoning bylaw. I was going, I was attempting to save a reading. We have audiences both here and at home, and I believe that's enough change. If it was just one word, and it had been pre-printed and distributed through all the houses in town, I was comfortable not, not reading it. I am no longer comfortable doing that. I'm going to do my best to get through it. I was about to read our recommendation on Article 8, but I had been informed by our Chairman of our Warrant Committee, that a slight mistake was made, and there's going to be a motion to reconsider Article 7 for an addition of a word. I'm choosing to give a moment to allow them to do that, because once we get into 8, I don't want to interrupt it, and I- Katie Collin, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We move to reconsider Article 7.
That's a motion to reconsider. It's been moved, has it been seconded? It's been seconded. Okay, so we have a motion to reconsider Article 7, that's been moved and seconded. Ms. Collin, do you want to address the reasons to reconsider?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. When the motion, when the revised sentence was being read, Mr. Cohane noticed that the word illuminated dropped out of the sentence in one place, and just needs to be added back in. So, it should be, "and, if so illuminated, comma, shall be illuminated by a stationary steady light," which was the original line- light," which was the original language in the recommendation. And it was just-
And so, so, but we, just procedurally, we need to take a vote on whether it makes sense to the membership to actually reconsider this. And so I don't want to get into the virtue of the, of the thing, except to, to say, is there anything else you want to add? Apparently, it's important enough that you want this body to reconsider.
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator, in consultation with town council, we think it should be added.
Okay. Does anyone wish to speak to the motion to reconsider?